City of Riverbank Planning Commission Meeting for Tuesday, April seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Make the roll call, please.
John Dinen.
Here.
Robert Ball.
Here.
Joan Stewart.
Here.
Melissa Hughes.
Here.
Mallory Fenrich. And just to make note, there's Steve Link, the alternate in the audience.
Thank you. Any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare that conflict at this time. Hearing none, we'll move to public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. And with the subject matter jurisdiction, excuse me, within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes, a maximum of five minutes per person. And each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comments period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, please state your name and city of residence. And please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. Any public comments from the audience? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member. For special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item two point one, posting of the agenda. The agenda for April seventeenth, twenty eighteen, Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards. Post Office, City Websites, and email to the library on April twelfth, twenty eighteen. Item two point two, approval of the agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion. Or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow any item to be taken out of order. Do any commission members have any input on this item? Hearing none. Item two point three, approval of the minutes of the March twentieth, twenty eighteen, Planning Commission meeting, having been read by the individual commissioners, and stands approved as submitted. I have a recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the consent calendar by roll call vote.
No, two approves.
You have a second?
Second.
Chair Dinen? Oh, I'm doing roll call.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ball?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fenrich?
Yes.
That passes, five oh.
Item three, public hearing presentations. Donna?
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, it'll be just a moment while we get the PowerPoint up there. Okay, I'll start without her. Okay, this is the architectural and site plan review for a commercial retail shell on Atchison, at thirty-three oh one Atchison. The property is in the downtown specific plan. And that is downtown core is the zoning. And the general plan designation is mixed use. And the architectural review of existing structures, especially ones that are not expanding, is not a project pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Okay, the property size is a little over fifteen thousand square feet. And the building itself is approximately, uh, excuse me, the lot itself is approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet by a hundred and twenty-five feet. And the building itself is about twenty-five hundred square feet. The site is currently vacant, but it had been a set lift tow lot. And had been basically the building, a paved lot, surrounded with fencing, and a parking lot for the last few years. The building, uh, the proposed plan includes frontage improvements on Atchison and, um, excuse me, let's see. If the proposed plan needs frontage improvements, we did submit this to Caltrans, and I didn't hear back from them, they're notoriously slow. But if it does need anything with curb and gutter, sidewalk, or driveway replacement, that would all be done to city and Caltrans standards. The proposed building itself is, oh, here we go. There we go. Okay, so a summary of the project, the request is to demo the interior of the building and remodel the exterior of an existing vacant building, including parking lot improvements, a trash enclosure, and landscaping. This map's a little bit hard to see, but the project location is on Atchison and Third. It's the northeast corner directly across the street from the Del Rio. So when the tow lot was up in business, this is what you would expect to see as you drove by it. And this is the way the building sits right now. So the proposed elevation is to add new aluminum storefront frames and glazing for the windows. A new metal roll-up door. Existing masonry veneer is removed and replaced with new veneer finish. Trim is removed and replaced, new cement plaster finish, new strained, excuse me, stained wood lap siding. I guess I'm a little bit ahead of myself here. The site plan shows near the top, the building itself, which I had mentioned is currently vacant. And there is no proposed floor plan at this time, because this is a future retail space, and they don't have a tenant at this point. The parking is all in front of the building, it's all existing, and it's between the building and Atchison. Well, thank you. There are two entrances and exits. There's one off of Atchison and one off of Third Street there. And then on the upper east side of the building, which would be the right, is a proposed location for a trash enclosure. The jet, there are general plan policies that this project is consistent with, which is reducing the visual impact of parking lots, and that will be done with landscaping. In fact, the landscaping, the submittal of landscaping plans and irrigation is a condition of approval for the project. Design policy eight point three focuses on high-quality building materials. I do have a, whoops, wrong one, wrong one here. Down lower there in front of the podium, we have the veneers and the materials for the building. Except for my crutches, I'd get up and lift it up for you. Thank you. Maybe we could just pull out a chair and set it on that. There you go. That way. Uh-oh. Thank you. Okay, so the colors and materials are basically similar to this, this is an existing building, not in Riverbank. But you can see the wood veneers and the rock, and the colors are whites and grays and blacks.
Excuse me just a second, Donna, can you?
Yes.
Do commissioners see this? Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I'm sorry, can you go back to the elevations so we can relay?
Absolutely, absolutely. There we go. So like I said, it's in whites and grays and blacks, and then you have the, uh, the rock in the lower portion of the building, the aluminum windows, the storefront windows. The white rectangular that you see on the building, that's a proposed sign area for the future retail use. And then the new roll-up door to the right. Okay, so again, I'd mentioned that policy design eight point three discusses using high-quality building materials, which these samples do show that. Design ten point one, you have pedestrian and bicycle access from the street, which is shown on the site plan. Policy design ten point eight, ground floor facade treatments, which this building does do with its new windows and the veneers on the building. And then design ten point eleven talks about bicycle rack locations, which can be seen from the inside. It doesn't show the bicycle rack location on the site plan currently, but I will be working with the, um, the project applicant in order to locate that bicycle rack. As I mentioned before, the architectural review of an existing structure is not a project pursuant to CEQA guidelines. And that's all I have. The project applicant is here, if you have questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
I have a question. This is a remodel of an existing location, is the goal to renovate it with the intention of leasing it?
No, I, well, at this point, the building is being upgraded by the property owner, who had a retail use in mind. But that's not moving forward at this time, so I think he is open to any retail use in the future.
What kind of a business would, would occupy this, this possible site?
Well, any number of, uh, any number of retail uses could be at this site. The original intent was possibly a dispensary for cannabis, but the city has a moratorium, and that's until July. So we are not moving forward on any cannabis applications at this time. But because the project applicant has purchased the site, he does wish to move forward and, you know, make it look nice for the downtown, whether it becomes a dispensary or just some other retail use. He wants to be ready for an opportunity.
Any other questions from the commission?
I think it's a great project.
Sasan? Yeah, I think it's a really great project, I'm excited to see a downtown building being revitalized. I'm just looking at the elevations, the side elevations, they're in the staff report, but not in the PowerPoint. And I might just be nitpicking, but is it possible to extend the siding just along the sides? Just maybe as an aesthetic feature? It's just something I noticed.
It could be done, and we could also dress up that area with additional landscaping, maybe some trellises or a tree along the side.
Any other commissioners?
And this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Any input from the public? Hearing none?
Well, looks like we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
Annabelle again. Four cannabis we bring. Um, garage. It's a beautiful project to make the building look nice. It's moving forward. Um, it looks like we, so all I'm saying. The point that, um, it's good to really reflect the city's understanding. And I hope that we are not going to have another. The level of service. Um, that's a fast, a lot of success. Approved. I was one of the negative thought against CEQA. CEQA not necessary.
To do at that point, because it was just, there was no expansion of the building. But it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that some things like this, which is a retail, which will bring cars, which increase noise, which increases environmental issues, and most of all, traffic. So I would just like to point out, moving forward, that this is just where I stand, that Riverbank already has two approved dispensaries. And this will probably come up as a dispensary, which is a free country. And I would just hope that the commissioners will really look into thinking about really what it's doing to transportation needs. Crossroads West is coming up, and that's going to be a big issue, you're going to see a lot of me. So on this project, I came tonight just knowing that this was probab, was one of the applicants that removed himself. And I just want to voice out my concerns of the number of dispensaries coming to Riverbank. I don't question the legality, but I do question the wisdom of putting so many retail businesses in this manner. It's really making a lot of noise, everybody's saying this is the new way to make money for cities, and I can understand that. But I'm very close to the Patterson dispensary, and I have to say that it seems like the traffic has not really been necessarily bothersome, except for certain times. Though I was told that there was an incident on a weekend, I think it was before Easter, the day before Easter, where there was something happening in the parking lot, where there was crowbars coming up. And so I asked the person who told me about it, and I said, well, did your wife know what was happening? She said, no, she was wise enough to move on. So my next question is, and this is really not part of the application, but just, just for information, because I'm a, I live in that area. What do we do when we see something happening? And instead of running away, can we call a number? Can you give the public a number to call, where we can say there's something going on? There's so many, it's summertime, and if you go there, I don't know if you have, any of you have been, I know some know the neighborhood.
You've got thirty seconds.
You can see that there's a lot of traffic, so I would like to voice my concerns, and I hope you'll think about it, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else from the public?
Yes, I'm Haskell Moore of Riverbank. You already have two cannabis shops in Riverbank, and that's too, too many, I know you don't need three. And I know you have applications for seven altogether, one pulled out, so that means you got two, three, you got four left. Three left after this one. So this ain't going to be the last one. So if anyone thinks that this is going to be, in the city thinks this is going to be the last cannabis shop, they get applications on their desk right now, and they're going to keep filling in and filling in and filling in. We get through, it's going to have six. Like I said, you have seven to start with. So they're not going to quit with two or three cannabis shops. And as far as environmental, environmental is concerned, there's a couple of things about that property up there that I don't think all of you know. Of course, that doesn't matter, I guess, but, uh... Of course, that doesn't matter, I guess, but, uh, that come to, come to light a little later, maybe. So you answered one question right away, in the very beginning, there's gonna be a cannabis shop, if it can be. If it can't be, then somebody's probably gonna complain that they put a lot of money into a building when the city promised they could have a cannabis shop there. And, uh, and, uh, sue the city because they went back on the word, like the man on Third Street said he was gonna do if they didn't pass that one, uh, back here to the corner. So, um, we have enough cannabis shops, and we don't need them, and they're not really here permanently yet. So, um, keeps out of mind, please.
Thank you for your input, sir. Anyone else from the public wishes to comment on this issue? Hearing none? A motion to approve?
Approval of the remodel?
Approval of the, uh, site plan and review?
A motion to approve.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Chair Devon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ball?
Yes.
And Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenridge?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, item four, planning commission workshop presentations, item four point one, development agreements.
We're experiencing some, some, some technical difficulties again. Anyway, this is, uh, a training on development agreements, and, uh, Roman Acosta of JB Anderson Land Use Planners will be, uh, doing the presentation on development agreements. And we'll get that going for you in just a moment. Not working? Roman, would you like to come up and? Oh, John's gonna give it today, I apologize. It's gonna be John Anderson. There we go.
Thank you, Donna. Yeah, I'm gonna do it. Yes, I'll need that. Thank you. So Chairman, members of the commission, my name is John Anderson, um, contract planner with the city of Riverbank. Um, good to see you. Obviously a new commission, Joan. Uh, this is nice. I work on big, big projects, special projects, downtown specific plan. I worked on, um, the Riverbank Industrial Complex specific plan. Um, I'm working on a project that Annabelle mentioned, uh, previously called the Crossroads West Project, which is about a three hundred and ninety acre specific plan, so it's the Tulip Farm and the lands westerly of Oakdale Road. So we're in the process of working on a specific plan and environmental document to accompany that project. So the purpose, um, behind tonight's discussion, every now and then we'll have these workshops on various planning-related items. So the purpose tonight is to kinda go over development agreements as an, as an instrument. There's a number of different planning applications that we work with. Development agreements just happen to be one of many. And, uh, the city of Riverbank has used them on occasion, on special projects, um, that required special attention. And that's pretty much what they are. The way that, way that they're presented is it's a contract, a negotiated contract between the city and developer. And, uh, generally, the contract terms can be anywhere from, let's say, ten years up to twenty years, depending on the complexity of the project. Generally, on industrial projects and larger projects, you'll have a greater, greater timeframe. It can, it can govern land, govern, uh, land use. Uh, still has to be consistent with a general plan or a specific plan. And then, uh, right, and that's what, that's what it says there. So, uh, purpose, uh, can allow greater latitude of, uh, methods of approval, can, um, provide some flexibility for large projects, depending on what they're trying to pursue. And then, um, affords developer greater assurances that things won't change. Quite often with the development agreement, we'll fold in as exhibits to the development agreement what the current, current codes are, like road improvement standards, um, uh, infrastructure standards, um, what the city's current fees, fees might be, um, and that type of thing. And then, kind of the last is that, and one of the most important for the development community is, it vests the rights to develop the property according to these rules. And, uh, it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty strong vested right in statute, so that's, that's, that's obviously pretty important. What does a development agreement cover? Again, it can cover permitted uses, density, intensity of the use, provisions for reservation, dedication of land, when that land is physically given up, um, like a park site or, or something like that. And then, um, it could talk about financing, the terms of financing, public infrastructure. And then it can also talk about reimbursement mechanisms. A lot of times, these big projects like Crossroads West, there's gonna be investments in, in that, in this case, uh, municipal, a new municipal water well, a nearly two million gallon, uh, peaking reservoir, a tank. There's gonna have to be some signals, some street improvements, et cetera. So the idea is that the developer has a fee obligation that would help build these things, but the reality is we need those improvements earlier than late, so we're gonna need them to advance those funds. So it's through that development agreement, we can define how that is to take place, and then from a developer's perspective, you know, how they might be reimbursed over time, or as fee credits, or some other instrument. So advantages of development agreements, um, again, we can implement planning policies. We can encompass developer requirements, and, uh, talk about performance standards. Actually, that's, that's a pretty important one there. If you, with Crossroads, we're gonna have a commercial component, about fifty-six acres of this site, a little more in that, is designated for commercial development. There can be, um, a performance standard that suggests that so much of the commercial is developed before so much residential is developed, as an example. There's performance standards, like we can ask and require improvements to roadway segments before things move forward. Um, we can ask for extension of, of utilities into future phases, so, um, those future phases are able to develop without, without complexity. Disadvantages is that, you know, like a variance, it can deviate from city standards. Sometimes development agreements provide unrealistic expectations, and then the city policies and standards, again, are, are locked in at the time of, of approval. So those are some of the disadvantages. Um, process is similar to any other process we work on with the city application submittal standard. We have a standard shell DA that we use. Um, the attorney's office has gone over it, so many of the terms in the shell DA aren't negotiable. And really, all we're negotiating on is just some of the key points for the project. And then, obviously, we have to go through project referral. It is required that we do SEQA as part of that, um, DA. And then, of course, the DA is brought both before the planning commission and the city council for action. Project referral is, um, the site plan that you presented earlier. Um, in order for Don, Donna, to complete your staff report, she was under obligation to package the project up, define what the project is, and then send it out to various agencies for referral. So Caltrans was one that she mentioned that she had difficulty tracking down to get comments back. We do that as a standard practice on all of our applications. So in that case, probably city departments, Caltrans, maybe some of the utilities were notified. We have a standard list of agencies that we contact. Anyway, so that's what, that's what's meant by project referral. So examples of what we've used DAs on before in the past would be, uh, the Crossroads Commercial. So Crossroads Commercial was made up of, really, two parts. Um, it's a mixed-use project, not necessarily on the same site, but you had the commercial out in front where Staples and Best Buy and whatnot are, and then you had residential behind it. So there was a number of terms and conditions that the developer felt there, it was important for them to be able to move the project forward. There's reimbursement issues, a lot of the kinds of things we talked about earlier with the development agreements, that were part of this project, so, and obviously, that's been built, most of it. There's still a little bit, a couple paths, I think, left, left to be built on, but for the most part, project's finished. This was a map, Joan will recall, out in the Bruinville area, um, kind of south, um, sa- yes, just south of the high school site, where, where, um, we had a standard subdivision project, but the conditions on this project were tied to another project, and, um, the condition needed, the conditions needed to be segregated so that they were specific to this property is opposed to another property. And we used the development agreement as an instrument to clean that up. There was a number of issues we needed to clean up, but that was, that was pretty important. It worked out, worked out very well. Gave the property owner additional life, additional time, um, on the map, as part of this mapping process. It's another thing development agreements can do. Typically, a, a map is valid for two years. You can get up to three one-year extensions on a map approval. But with a development agreement, you can extend the map life to the, to equal the life of the development agreement. So if the development agreement's ten years, now the map life's automatically ten years. If it's twenty years, it'd be twenty years, whatever the term of the development agreement is, or as stipulated in the development agreement itself. Um, they used, uh, they used a development agreement on Flavors. Um, I think that had a lot to do with tax consequences and others associated with it, use, hours of operation, that kind of stuff, all of which are contractually bound between the developer, property owner, and, and the city. Um, looking, looking ahead, um, I know Donna's working on an application involving the cannery development, which, you know, we've been working on a long time to see something happen with Sun Garden Ganji's property. So it sounds like finally, we're gonna see some development, there's some long-term planning associated with it, so this is, this is gonna be, um, it's, this'll be perfect, actually. It'll, it's first real opportunity we've had to dive into the downtown specific plan and actually work towards reuse of this area and, and get some, get some energy going. And then, uh, it's my understanding that they're planning on using the development agreement to help bind the project proponents' performance standards, I'm assuming, with this project as well, where there would be some additional components, you know, as it relates to commercial and, and maybe even some housing in this area. Crossroads West, I mentioned it earlier. We, um, are working on the entire project area, which is shown on the screen on the right-hand side, which is about three hundred and ninety acres, as a specific plan in EIR. The project proponents of the commercial piece, which we know it is MU one, which is this layout down below, which is just a conceptual layout of what it might look like, although it's gonna be changing quite a bit. We're developing commercially, it's gonna be commercial and residential, similar to what Crossroads did on the east side of Oakdale Road. They've submitted application for a development agreement on that property to, um, to stipulate similar types of concerns and, and, um, uh, issues that they had with the other Crossroads, you know, reimbursement, um, you know, what, 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 what kind of improvements would be expected of them. In other words, just trying to define, you know, what the project obligations would be as it relates to the city. So, uh, we're, we're gonna be working through that staff level, and it's, uh, the property owners', um, property owners', um, suggestion that that be part of the package of approvals, that'll be part of this general plan change, rezone, annexation request, specific plan and DA, so it's just one of many things we'll be looking at with that project. So, so where, so where have we used them in the past? Flavors, Hayes, and then Crossroads Commercial. So it's been a useful tool for us at staff. Um, it's something that's negotiated, you know, freely between the city and the developer, and it's binding. It's a binding contractual commitment, so. I don't know if you guys have heard about development agreements, but this is a good way to kinda hear about them and ask questions about what a DA does or what it doesn't do. And then, of course, we got Rob in here, who's an expert in development agreements, so he'll be able to add any to the discussion.
Any questions from the commission?
I think we're done.
Good, perfect. Yep, you got it.
Thank you.
Item four point two. Item four point two is two thousand seventeen general plan and housing element annual progress report.
I just have a quick question.
Well, please, sir, come up and. Please state your name and city of residence.
Uh, my name is Ryan Rieger, uh, Riverbank. Um, are we gonna be discussing the Rozelle curb sidewalk thing tonight?
I don't believe it's on the agenda.
I didn't think so either. Okay, we're a little confused with the time the paper needed to be in on our pick and what we've thought, so we thought maybe you guys were gonna be talking about tonight. That's why I wanted to ask, so we didn't waste any of your time. Thank you.
Um, if I might, I do know that, uh, Development Services, specifically Laura, is working on this, uh, getting those, uh, responses from you.
Okay.
Um, I don't think it's the next council meeting, but it might be the one after that. So if you still have something outstanding you'd like to submit, I'm sure she'd be happy to get it.
And what was her name again?
Her name is Laura Grable.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, who will?
Uh, we're writing it down for you.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Okay, this'll just be a, a quick, quick presentation on our twenty seventeen annual general plan and housing element update, or element report. So section six five four zero zero of the government code requires each jurisdiction to prepare and submit an annual progress report, uh, on its general plan by April first each year. It's something that we present to the city council and share with the planning commission. And we pretty much give the, a progress report on, um, the city's, uh, RENA, if you've heard of that, the regional housing need allocation. Uh, we also talk about actions that the city's taken in the past year towards completion of general plan and housing element programs. And the, you need to do this because if you don't have it in, um, you can't get grants from the state. So it helps ensure grant funding to have it done and in on time. So the council-approved report is submitted to the California Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing and Community Development. It doesn't require approval by these state agencies, but they, they accept it and they, they have it on, um, have it on file. And some of the grants that, if you didn't complete your, uh, update, um, you wouldn't be able to apply for the Home Investment Partnership Program, which offers some, uh, money towards affordable housing. And there's also the Community Development Block Grant, uh, which has affordable housing and anti-poverty, poverty programs. Uh, so one of the requirements is you have to have your, um, submittals on your yearly updates, um, current, or you can't apply for these grants. Um, and there are various other grants, too, for parks and different programs and infrastructure as well. So some of the highlights is, I mentioned the regional housing needs allocation, which is called RENA. Uh, you can see the percentages are fairly low for the city. We only had thirteen building permits issued in twenty seventeen. But this isn't uncommon, you know, because of the way the hu- the housing economy, you know, the bubble burst, and it's been hard for a lot of cities to come back and meet their, uh, housing needs allocation. So we're, we're not in the minority here. Um, as far as the general plan, um, some of the progress that I reported on to the city council was, uh, program land dash three, uh, which means that the city will continue to actively research and apply for different grants to help with the city budget, and for things like infrastructure and affordable housing. Program land five, um, is, uh, concerned zoning element, uh, excuse me, zoning amendments. So as the state, um, issues different mandates on, um, items that the city has to amend in its zoning, or there are different programs that come up, uh, through HCD that requires, uh, the city to amend in order to keep, um, the general plan, uh, consistent with the housing element, uh, the city program agrees to meet those, um, those zoning requirements, to do those amendments. And then there's also, um, a job training program that's mentioned in, uh, the general plan. And the city has, um, kinda paired up with, uh, with, uh, Santa Claus Alliance, and we, uh, have had. And we have had at least three women come through the city. And they may be on, you know, county help or getting food stamps or something. They're in job training programs. And they are paid by the alliance, but they come to the city and they work for us and do things like, you know, filing and scanning for the laser fish files that we have. Sometimes they even, you know, after a little bit of training, we'll let them come up to the counter and kind of cover at lunchtime and learn some customer service skills. It's worked out really well. The last woman that we had in, she seemed like she was going to be a perfect fit. And after a week, she got offered a full-time job somewhere, and we lost her right away. So we're on the list now to get somebody else in to kind of help with this training. And it's really been a benefit for the city. As far as the housing element goes, we had several, well, actually, a good handful of programs that we accomplished this last year. The rezone from R1 to R3 of 2644 Morale Road. That was a property that had a single-family dwelling that was vacant on it. Now it's been upzoned by the city to kind of prepare it for future development in a higher density. There was some rulings that came down from the state concerning accessory dwelling units, which used to be called second dwelling units. So we went through that section of the code and updated that. There was some language for farmworker housing, transitional and supportive housing, and employee and farmworker housing that the city needed to update. And that had a lot to do with removing a requirement for conditional use permits, to make it easier for the developer to come in and to be able to find a piece of property and have it already properly zoned and allow them to add this type of housing to our housing stock. That kind of goes hand in hand with that Program 3.1B, which is a general plan fee waiver. For example, when the city rezoned and did a general plan amendment for the property on Morale to take it from R1 to R3, we did not charge the property owner for those actions. The city carried it through on our own. And then Program 3.1D is a parking review where the city, as larger projects come in or come into the downtown, if there are some parking issues that are keeping a project from moving forward, the city agrees to be a little bit more flexible and come up with some different types of programs or some parking sharing that could help a project move forward, even though it doesn't have quite the right amount of parking that we feel it should have. That's about it. I'd be, you know, happy to answer any questions you may have. This is something you'll be seeing on a yearly basis, usually in April or March, hopefully, if I can get it done quicker. But again, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy.
I only have one.
Yes.
You mentioned grants.
Yes.
How much grant money do we get coming in every year?
Well, it depends on which grant it is. Sue Fitzpatrick in Parks and Rec and I worked on a grant last year to upgrade the pool and the community center. And I believe we were able to secure a little over $300,000 for that one. We did have one into CDBG. It was a little bit over a million and has three parts to it. One of it is for ADA upgrades because we have a lot of ramps on some of our corners that aren't quite up to ADA standards right now. So we had identified some lower-income areas of the city that needed that type of assistance, and we put in for that type of grant. And then normally with the CDBG, we ask for funding for first-time homebuyer programs and then for the rehabilitation programs for the lower-income residents that we have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're on item five, Planning Commission Comments. And the first thing I see is the League of Cities Conference in Monterey.
I thought you might like to, you know, have that part of the floor open in case you had some comments or some questions or suggestions about the conference.
I mean, overall, I thought it was very beneficial to go. And I learned a lot, especially about housing in California. Obviously, some of it wasn't applying to us, at least not yet, so, but it was a lot of good information.
Robert?
First, I appreciate the opportunity to actually get to go and attend. I agree, it was extremely informative. It broadened my understanding a great deal.
I think it's appropriate, Steve, do you have any comments you want to make on Monterey?
I concur with you that it was definitely useful to us and also hear some commissioners' insight from other cities around the state. See how we figure with situations they have and resolutions and solutions they have and some things going on in their cities. Definitely showed how first help like it is and that kind of the danger we may be in if the state implements laws that tie our hands in a way to a particular problem. So forces to obey their housing. We don't have low transportation lined up. Interesting we've got my little turn about what's a new quarter.
I've just got one story. The last day when they had the dysfunctional city. The attorney, you might get a kick out of this, Rob, mentioned Rosenberg's Rules of Order. I thought, this is a joke, this is all going along with... So I got home and I looked it up, there is a Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And the League of California Cities uses it. It's much smaller than Robert's, but it's there in future, if we ever want to change our basis. But it was a great week, thank you, Donna.
That's interesting. And I personally felt that we all kind of learned something that wasn't on their agenda, which is, you know, emergency and long-range planning. For example, the first night we were there, there was no water. And the second night we were there, there was no electricity. And so, you know, when you think about your city and when you have emergencies and how to recover from that, I think it kind of, you know, it kind of brings it all home when you're actually experiencing some of that, when you're talking about planning. No water the first night, the Public Works was replacing pipes. And then the second, the second night, the power just went out in the afternoon.
And the power being out, no water, except for some commissioners that had water.
Well, you haven't lived till you've gone to your hotel room lit by glow sticks in the hallway. We should keep a lot of those on hand.
Please, go up to the podium.
They are interesting workshops. The public cannot ask questions? I mean, in your, it says questions at the end, is this just for the commissioners? If that is so, I would like to suggest that maybe in some of your workshops, especially, we can also make comment or question the presenters. Is that possible? You know, on the cannabis thing, at the end of the, at the council level, we were told that there were so many workshops and you didn't come and comment. And I noticed that tonight, we were not invited to comment, and I wanted to comment on the development.
That development presentation was for the education of the commission.
I understand that, because it's a workshop. So I was just wondering whether, where can it be put or where can public have the questions now on the workshop? I understand.
Well, I think our chairs have been pretty lenient at allowing people to come up at times that aren't necessarily for public hearings. So I would think that during the development agreement...
Have raised my hand, I guess.
Yeah.
I was shy.
Okay.
Which is not usual. Anyway, so I guess I just ask John or ask you, because I have one question on the development agreement.
You can ask the chair.
Okay, yes. Chair, do you know, an ordinance cannot be passed before a development agreement is signed. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll refer to Donna.
A development agreement is approved by ordinance. And so the city and the developer negotiate. The developer agrees to sign it. And then the city says, okay, we have this development agreement, everybody's in accordance, and so we approve this ordinance, and that approves the development agreement.
Okay. So an ordinance cannot be passed until the development agreement is signed, correct?
No, I don't.
No.
You said the reverse.
Okay, well, the... No, I guess what I'm saying is the agreement has to be completed, signed by both parties, before it's even made to ordinance. Is that correct?
A development agreement is only the first step, and then it's going to go through...
I know that, sir.
Okay.
Yes, the city will approve it after the developer has approved it.
The reason I ask is because one of the, I was reviewing some of the notes on the Cannabis Downtown Cooperative. The agreement wasn't signed. It was signed after the ordinance.
We're getting off target a little bit.
I know, we are off.
I've been...
Patient?
Patient, thank you very much.
Okay, so I'll just ask you then. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We're still under Planning Commission Comments, and I think it's appropriate at this time. I attended a meeting at the Cannery with Donna, the mayor, the finance manager, or is she finance director?
Finance director.
And the possible developers of the Cannery area. And so that should be made part of the public record that I was at that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, item six, County Referral Correspondence Information.
Okay, the Stanislaus County Planning Commissioners Workshop has been postponed until the fall. They were having some concern about dates and trying to get the speakers on the same date, and it just really wasn't working out. And so they felt since the League of Cities had just had their conference, then they would wait until fall to have this one. So I will provide more information as we get closer to that date on what the topics will be, the date, the time, and make sure you're all up to date on that.
Thank you, Donna. Staff comments?
Okay, the city council meeting for March 27th. I didn't have any items on there, I don't believe, to discuss. I should have gone through my notes, but I don't recall having an item at that meeting. As far as upcoming workshop topics, we will be talking about specific plans, and we'll be talking about zoning ordinance and amendments. Those are still on our list. If there are other topics like development agreements or site plan review, anything that you think would be a good topic for us to discuss, we'd be more than happy to put something together for you, so just let me know. And I might mention that under the next item, item adjournment, we have tentatively scheduled a special planning commission meeting for May 9th. And that would be to look at a development agreement that's being worked on for the Cannery site. So I'm glad John brought that up, because I was going to bring it up, too, that there was a site visit where we got to go out and kind of take a look at the site itself. Staff hasn't had a chance to see the DA yet. I know our attorneys and the developers are hard at work, working on it. And hope to see something really soon and be able to share that with you in May.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have anything else they'd like to ask or bring up?
No, I don't think so.
Hearing none, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, John.